All right, I've got 6:30. Before we get started tonight, we lost another member of our West Bend family over the weekend. We lost a junior high school student from West Bend West. And I think before we get started, if I could just ask for a quick moment of silence to think about that family and friends and teachers who knew him. Okay, thank you for that. It is April 1st at 6:30 PM. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKV, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources who have requested notice of our meetings. Deb, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will move to approve our agenda for tonight.
Second.
Any questions on the agenda? Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. We've got an agenda tonight, great. And we will turn it over to Jacob. I know Libby's gone today, so Jacob's gonna give us our high school update.
Yeah, as Joel said, Libby is overseas. She's in France with 30 other French students. They're exploring and touring France and Switzerland for the next week or so, so she'll be back next time. In East Athletics, East Baseball started off their season 2-0 in non-conference games and hopes to continue that streak tonight against Nicolay. Girls softball kicks off their season tonight against Homestead High School at home, and girls soccer will be facing off against the Bulldogs of Cedar, or of Grafton, sorry, tomorrow night in their first home game. West Bend Rush Lacrosse, which is a combination of East and West players, will be facing off in Oconomowak on Wednesday night. They just had a tough loss against Marquette High School, which is, I believe, the number one school in the state, but they should be doing good and we're expecting to hear more from them. And finally, solo and ensemble honors recital will be held this Sunday at the Silver Lining Arts Center at 3 o'clock. So, and then Libby and I also had said before she left that she'd like us to address the board and the community with the vote coming up tomorrow on the referendum for the high school. We find that it's in the school's best interest to vote yes for this. As students, not many people can vote in the high schools and not many people can vote in the elementary schools, so for the community to go out and vote for them, it really represents our voice well. And vote yes tomorrow doesn't only change things for the next couple of years, it changes things for years to come. So, we ask the community to go out and vote and support us all, so thank you.
Thank you for your report, and I just want to show of hands, did anybody on the board put Jacob up to that? This is a serious question. All right. No. Great. Thank you. We will move on to public participation tonight, and I'll do these in order that I received them, and I've got Casey Latz up first. Casey, if you don't want to go first, I can, if you wouldn't mind, come to the podium and you've got three minutes, just state your name and address.
Okay, Casey Latz, North 168 West 2119 Street, Main Street in Jackson. I've been a village resident since 1976. In the eighties, when I was on the village board, we asked, at that time Superintendent Wazardi, that we needed help with the new school, we had to do something. I believe we were ignored or laughed at. Next came Superintendent Herdrich. Yes, she purchased some land, but that's all the farther it got. And then we had Superintendent Nitske, which started the ball rolling. And I don't think he's here, but I want to thank him for getting this far. And I urge everybody, please get out tomorrow and vote yes. Now, there is a thing that no child left behind. If you've been in the Jackson School and toured it, you would know that it's not really ADA compliant. So, like I said, please, everybody get out and vote, and vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. We'll go to Larry Hetkey.
Larry Hetkey, North 169 West 19876 Georgetown Drive, Jackson, Wisconsin. I would like to commend the School Board, the administration, and all the people that helped prepare this referendum. I thought the information shared was extremely well done. The fact that it would only be $13 on $100,000 is excellent. I'm afraid that if it does not pass tomorrow, that if we wait another 10 years, instead of $47 million, we'd be looking at a $90 million referendum. So, if you still haven't talked to anybody in the audience or anyplace else, yes is the right answer.
Thank you, Larry. We'll go to Jack Lipold.
My name's Jack Lipold. Address W203 N16261 White Oak Circle in Jackson. In the spirit of full disclosure, like I say, I am on the board, and I was involved with the transactions of the School Board purchasing much of the land around the old fire station and everything. For several years, we've been kicking the proverbial can down the road. Now we are faced with the decision to upgrade our high school mechanicals, academic classrooms, and security systems, as well as replacing an outdated and deteriorating elementary school in Jackson. We're at a crossroads. Are we going to be proactive with these upgrades, or stand with our fingers crossed, hoping nothing goes wrong? Will we make our high school and elementary schools safe from sewer backups and power failures? Will we make our buildings ADA compliant? Will we update boilers instead of holding our collective breath while the fans keep them cool? But most importantly, will we make our buildings and as a result, our school staff and students safe from possible intrusions that could be deadly? Generations to come will judge on the choices we make tomorrow. No longer can we kick that can down the road. I urge you to vote yes on the referendum tomorrow.
Thank you, Jack. Scott Middlestead.
I see a lot of new faces up here from 24 years we've been talking about this. I know we have three minutes, but...
Start with your Neiman address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Scott Middlestead, North 161 West 19031 Oakland Drive, Jackson. I was village president in Jackson for about 11 years and on the board for three, and we've been talking about this school since day one and a decade before I got there. Like I said, now we're 24 years later down the road, still talking about the same thing. It's, the school has deteriorated that much more, and we're like, it's all about priorities, I guess, tomorrow, is what do you want for your community, what do you want for your kids' education? If it's shot down again, the only question I have is, when are we going to do it? I would actually ask the board if it doesn't pass tomorrow to get rid of the land and sell it. I mean, I don't know when you'd possibly do it if it doesn't go tomorrow. So, we've been waiting 24 years for this, 34 years, I know Casey was on the board before me, and we've been talking about this issue over and over and over. All these seats have flipped, I don't know how many times, same people, same questions, or different people, same questions. So, I urge the public to vote yes, get this done. It's for our kids' future, and I know that sounds cliche, but it's also about what you want in the village. It's, do you want to upgrade the school system, want to keep up with everybody else? We need to do this. If you don't, we could turn into another MPS, and you know, I don't want to knock any other districts, but we all know what that's about and how they let that deteriorate and what that stands for today. So, it's an investment in our future, that's what it is, and it's all about priorities tomorrow. So, what's your priority? Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Brian Meckup.
My name's Brian Meckup. I live at W213 N16520 Glenbrook Drive in Jackson. I'm here this evening to voice my support for the referendum on the ballot tomorrow. One case made to vote down the referendum suggests that Jackson should create its own school district and the taxpayers of West Bend should not have to pay for a school in Jackson. If Jackson were to create a district of its own, all the property taxes from a sizable and growing municipality would be redirected. That's certainly not some, that's certainly something that would increase West Bend mill rates. Instead, the case has been made to close Jackson Elementary and bus the kids into the West Bend Elementary Schools. There's a cost to busing, and for the district to pay to bus all the elementary students from Jackson into West Bend, we'd see a tax increase. This argument also defeats itself. Some opponents of the referendum claim that the district has squandered funds in the past and that if we had only maintained our facilities better, we wouldn't need this referendum. Our mill rate is the lowest in the area, which means we're running leaner than anyone else. So, would we rather have had a higher mill rate in past years to better maintain our buildings? I doubt it. We strive to be a destination district. Do we meet that goal by moving funds from teacher pay and benefits to increase our maintenance budgets? How many incoming residents gauge the success of a school district based on its heating and cooling efficiency, rather than the success of its teachers and thereby its students? How many residents want rock-bottom tax rates if they come with rock-bottom school district employees? Do we want to compete with Slinger, Cedarburg, and Germantown, or against Milwaukee Public Schools? But birth rates in the area are going down and district enrollment is decreasing. Again, look at the districts around us. Is the declining birth rate causing less student enrollment in Slinger, in Cedarburg? Public schooling has become an open market for teachers and for students. If we refuse to invest in our schools because we see lower enrollment, we guarantee that decrease for years to come. Now is not the time, I've heard. We have debt we're still paying off. In principle, I agree with this idea, but it ignores the cost of money and the value of a dollar. Municipal bond rates are low right now. Construction costs continue to rise, so is now the right time? No, we should have actually done this years ago, but we definitely should not wait again. And finally, there are concerns over safety and security. We have guards and gates protecting money in our banks, but we argue about hardening the environment around our children. These schools were built and remodeled decades ago. We should absolutely support this referendum for the security and safety enhancements to them. I'm a fairly conservative person, but I'm certainly willing to invest money where it makes sense. This referendum is one of the situations where the return incredibly outweighs the cost. I have voted yes to support it, and I urge all the residents of the West Bend School District to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. That's all the cards I have tonight. Anybody else wishing to address the board tonight? Can you pass those down to Deb for me? If not, thank you for those who spoke. We'll move on to our action items. I forgot to mention Tiffany Larson is out of town, but we do still recognize a quorum here tonight. On our consent agenda, we've got minutes of the March 18th, 2019 regular board meeting and dispersments posted to April 1st, 2019, and I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions on the consent agenda? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Next up, we are, have an action item on our 2020-2021 school year calendars from Jen Getteman.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I couldn't be here the last time the calendar was presented, but my understanding is the team did an awesome job sharing that information with you. So, I'm really here tonight to answer any follow-up questions that you may have about the 2020-2021 school year calendar.
I wasn't here last time, so I feel like in years past, and perhaps you don't know this off the top of your head, but I feel like we're going to school much later than we have in the past, and we're pushing graduation almost a week later than we have in prior years.
For this calendar, typically it is the second weekend in June. The difference with this calendar is that we are waiting, we're starting on the first, which is Labor Day. Typically, Labor Day weekend is like around the first of September, so that in itself in the natural calendar pushes things down. The earliest we can start, though, is the first.
Right, so aren't we actually starting, when I look at this, it looks like we're starting earlier than we have in the past, because we're starting before Labor Day. I understand that, I understand what the laws are. But then we've got two days off in October, we've got an extra day off in November, we've got a fairly substantial Christmas break, which I'm fine with. We've got additional days off in January, we've got additional days off in February, and then we have our typical spring break, which pushes, I mean, I remember years past, we've had our last day of school, June 3rd, June 4th. I mean, this feels late to me, so I guess I question, what are the additional days off in February? And I'm sorry if you presented this last time when I wasn't here, but it just feels like this is a really lengthy calendar with us starting earlier and going later. And I'm just not so sure that I buy it.
Okay, well, I can speak to that. It was a lot, a lot of conversation with the whole committee from different perspectives as far as parents, teachers, Don's perspective of his previous school districts, they were Don Memorial Day weekend, so the idea of going in...
It's Don's previous school district, sorry.
The idea really is, our team came together and discussed the purpose of each of those days. And so, while students wouldn't be there, we had a long conversation around when teachers are there, what is it that they're doing? And so, for example, October 15th would be more around, how is that school doing, looking at their data, and the teachers are writing their student learning objectives and making their plans for their goals for the year. When we come down to November, we had a lot of conversation. One of the points is that the day before Thanksgiving is a highly traveled day. For this year and next year, we do have school that day, and even if it's just for teachers, it's still a professional day, but it's always a struggle, you know, knowing that everyone is, or a lot of people are traveling, or even going to the next door neighbors in preparing big meals. And so, we wanted to maximize our time and not have that as a teacher or student day, and then have other days so that we could have intense professional learning. For December, again, it's kind of how the calendar fell with the Christmas break. And then the idea in January would be that the 18th would be off for the holiday, but also on the 19th, the teachers would come, and that's when we'd have our mid-year check-in on the SLOs, but we'd also have that semester time for reporting student progress. So, that's what we would be doing on January 19th. And then February 12th and 15th, you'll also see a yellow and a red day there, so I can, again, just share with you the plans for those days. The 12th would, again, be a professional day with a day off for students and staff on the 15th. The team that we worked with felt strongly about having additional days off rather than getting out sooner. That was, we talked about that several times, and so it was really planning those around the holidays, but also looking at, how are we using those professional development days? The spring break, we talked about alignment with other systems, and athletics is a big piece of that, whether we like it or not. And so, looking at that, some other districts combine spring break with Easter, and sometimes that shortens the school year calendar. But for us, we felt it was a priority to stay aligned with those that are around us, with having that spring break at the end of March. And then the 12th would be a professional day, and this would be more of professional development, development that is really started in August as far as like teacher development and work on the curriculum and that sort of thing, where some of the other yellow days for professional development are looking at student data or school data to determine goals and progress monitoring of those goals. When we continue on with, after spring break, we have that Easter, the Monday after Easter also does extend. The staff has reported that they appreciate that additional day for families and students to really travel during that, whether it's with spring break or not. And then May 31st being the holiday that we're off. And then for this calendar, it does put us at the 9th of June ending. So, with our teacher contract being so many days and we needing so many student days, we tried to prioritize where those professional days were, and we felt it was still a win, even though our school year went to June 9th, rather than ending much sooner and then having the professional days after the school year.
So, on your committee, how many parents did you actually have on this committee?
We had one parent.
So, we have a district of 6,000 students and we had one parent represented? I mean, did we look at, why didn't we have a parent from elementary, from middle, and from high school?
Really, it was a smaller group than we've had, than we worked with in the past, and so we had representatives, teacher representatives, and some of our staff members are also parents that were on the committee.
I don't, I'm personally going to vote no for this. I don't like this calendar one bit. I don't like all the additional days off, and we're pushing out into June, which is going to extend our costs when we look at, you know, I just don't understand why we need all these extra days off in January, February, March. I mean, we basically have off at least one day a month, the way I'm looking at this, except we do. We have off, our students have off at least one day a month for the entire school year. Yeah, I'm voting no. This is too many days off during the year. I would rather see this much more compacted. I understand teachers need time, but we've given now extra days. I mean, we're basically giving off an extra day in October, right? So, we have one day of professional development, but then if I look at the 16th, that's a no school day, so teachers have that day off as well. And then teachers have three days off in November, they have the entire December break, and then basically, we're still have only one day of staff development in January and another day off, correct? Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't support it.
Nancy, there's actually two in January, okay? Of the three days off in January, one would be a, the 15th, no, excuse me, you're right, 15th is not a, 15th is not a in-service day, that's just the end of, okay? And so, when you look at the calendar, and I'm not disagreeing, I pushed to get done earlier just because that's the way I have always grown up, but, but the teachers on the committee were very definite in that if at all possible, they would like one day a month off with the calendar and go longer. So, so when you look at that, there's an additional day off in October, so that there's a no school on the 16th, that wasn't a case in the past. There's an extra day of Thanksgiving, partially because that Wednesday before Thanksgiving is the most traveled day in America, and so that was one of the days. December's pretty much the same. January takes into consideration Martin Luther King Day, so that becomes the day in January. February, the day is President's Day, but it's, could be any day, if that's the holiday that they chose. March remains the same, April remains the same, May remains the same. So, the four days that are additional is one in October, one in November, one in January, one in February, which adds to the end. You have to put them in someplace, and that's, that's where they put them, was at the end of the year.
Listen, I'm normally the biggest proponent for teachers, and I'm all about it, but my boss doesn't say to me, you get an extra day off a month either. So, I can't support this. Extending the school year beyond where we've been, when we're starting earlier, does not make sense to me. I'm sorry, I, you know, I don't have a problem with teachers getting the time to work together in groups and those type of things, but when we're adding this many additional days, I can't support it.
Just one more comment, and that is, make sure you don't, it's not additional days off, it's just a revision of when those days off are included, and so that...
Well, I believe it is additional days off, isn't it? Because I believe last year, teachers were, workday for Martin Luther King was a workday, correct? Not a paid holiday?
What I'm saying is that they were going later in the year, so that there are days off during the year, but the calendar extends longer. So, the number of teacher workdays isn't any different next year than it is, or in this year than it is now, it's just when those teacher workdays are put in. And so, if you chose to take out those four days, you would take off at the end of June, so you would be done the week of June 1st, as opposed to the week of June 7th. You wouldn't put any more or less days in, it would just be when you put those days in.
I understand that. So, what about, what if we have snow days? How does that work? We're going past the 13th, then?
What we have done on this, because this year was unusual with snow days, what we have done is highlighted the 14th, 15th, and 16th as potential staff development days in case we need, we have inclement weather. We have built in several days, but we would just like that cushion, just in case, again, this was a weird year with that, and we hadn't had any snow days in a long time. So, potentially, depending on the weather, depending on the schedule at the schools and that sort of thing, if we have one or two snow days, we would, we would be fine as far as the minimal minutes. And we also talked too about, you know, just Don's experience is just different. When they had a snow day, every day was made up. It was just a given. So, we talked a little bit about that, and while we're not at that point, but we have, we have enough time built in for some snow days, depending on what level you're at. The other thing is March 12th, you'll see that that's a potential snow day makeup, and that's what we ended up doing this year, but what we did is we identified that in the calendar, that that would, depending on the weather, we may indicate that that would be a staff-only day still, and then a student makeup day for snow, depending on the weather. But we do have some built in, but we're also planning for worst-case scenario, too.
Well, I'm disappointed that we only had one parent out of all the number of students that we have in this district on this committee. And I guess for future reference, I don't know if we've ever done this in the past, but it would be nice to actually survey our families, to ask what they prefer. I mean, I am not a parent who needs childcare, thank you, thank goodness, quite honestly, but I'm just wondering, what does this do to someone who needs childcare? And, you know, they're trying to find alternate sitters in every day, at least one day a month, as opposed to kind of that normal September to early June. And I don't like the idea that graduation is pushed back this far.
What is the date of graduation on this calendar?
Currently, this year, or the year soon? Well, it looks like it would be June 13th to me. And this year, it's June 8th?
That's right. The board doesn't set graduation, but it's typically been the Sunday after the last day of school. So, that I would assume graduation would be the 13th.
It just feels late. I mean, you are free to move forward with it, I just don't like it.
One last comment, and that is, I think the one parent that we had this year is one more parent than we had last year.
Well, that's too bad.
I'm not suggesting that it shouldn't have been more parents, but I think this is the first time in a while that we, we opened it up, we had a parent that said, can I be part of the committee? And so, we asked her to be part of the committee and went from there. I think that's correct, isn't it?
Yeah, last year, Joel was part of the committee with a different representative, a larger group of staff. We didn't have parents for the last two that we put together.
I kind of want to pipe up and make an, but you were at the meetings, correct, Jen?
Yes.
I can only assume, and please correct or verify this, that the teachers like having a day off a month so that they can take care of personal appointments and such, and if they don't get that, then they're more likely to take personal time, and then we're dealing with substitutes and less consistency for the students. So, while I, I can appreciate how difficult it is for people that need to secure childcare, that's not necessarily everyone, and, I mean, there's a give and take.
Yeah, and that was one of the talking points from the teacher's perspective, as well as the parent perspective, and the daycare piece for children who do need more care throughout the day, and talking with other parents around the system, you know, that is a concern, but they feel that, you know, for some, when they know ahead, you know, a lot of them use Cool Kids or something like that, where it's already built into the structure. So, some parents use that time to make those appointments, you know, on those days, some don't, same with teachers. But that was a talking point, but not everyone agreed to, you know, one or the other.
Jen, have you, what kind of feedback have you had since you put the proposed calendar out from the staff?
Really, I've gotten very minimal. Mr. Kasek, who is our principal partner on this, said after he presented and the communication went out, that he got many positive notes back of thank you and just feeling appreciated and heard. He passed those along to me, but I didn't get any specific, I also didn't get any specific that said, you know, we want to sit down and talk about it, so I didn't get any major positive or negative.
Nancy, I believe that you certainly might be right on the parent perspective in that would prefer to be done earlier. I know from the teacher perspective that I have visited with the faculty, I think they're very much in support of the calendar. And like I said, this wasn't my proposal, I suggested early on that we, we tried to get done the week before, but it was very, you know, they started with three calendars, they then went to seven or 10 calendars, and then they brought it back down to three and ended up with one. But from what I have seen and heard, the calendar committee, as well as the faculty, is very supportive of the proposal. Does that include all the parents? No, it certainly doesn't. But the faculty was supportive of what is being presented, and my comment was, as long as it's good for kids, I don't care if we have school on the Monday or the Friday, it's up, that doesn't matter to me, as long as what we're looking at is what's best for kids.
Mr. Schmick.
I would support what Ms. Jostman, her points that she brought up, especially for her parents in the elementary realm. I mean, they struggle with childcare to begin with, and then to have these extra days thrown in, in there is a bigger struggle. And would make sense, more sense to me that you'd be more consistent with, I guess, you could call it, teaching days. If you, every time you take a day off, then the next, next day you have to do review and so on to make up, generally speaking, especially in the lower grades. My wife was a, was a public school teacher, and she struggled with that. So, having a lot of days off is, in one sense, might be fine, I suppose, but when it comes to also comparison to the private business world, I'm sorry, if I got appointments or whatever during the day, guess what? I got to take off. That's just the way it is. That's just the way it is. And, um, that's just the way it is. So, I, I'm not supporting this calendar either.
Any other comments from board members? If not, I'm going to move to table this calendar and ask Don Rambold off, I think, four days off, and if you could plug those four days back in and move the end date from the ninth back to the third or fourth. And present both calendars back to staff, the committee, and, and get kind of an opinion, and just say that this was discussed at our board meeting, and there were board members expressing their concerns over the end date and the days off. You know what I'm getting at. And then, uh, I would propose you come back and present us the findings.
Okay.
And we could do that at our next board meeting. I don't think it would take more than two weeks to get that done.
Okay.
I know that was a long motion, Deb, but that was a motion I made to table, and, uh... So, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
So, again, my motion is to table, you've, you know, take, put some of those days back on the calendar, put a second calendar together. I'm not saying scrap this, I'm saying show two calendars, get some feedback on that, from as many staff, administrators, parents if you can, and come back and present, you know, at our next board meeting, or if you need more time at the board meeting after that. Obviously, this is two years away, so we've got time.
Awesome.
Okay, any further discussion on that? All in, go ahead.
I'd also like to see how this goes in with sports, quite honestly, because I know if we have an off day of school, correct me if I'm wrong, kids cannot practice that day, correct?
Well, they can, they can practice if it's a scheduled off day of school, but they don't practice is if it's a snow day. If it's an inclement weather off day, then we don't have practice because the weather was bad. But if we don't have school on, on a week from Friday, because it's a scheduled in-service day, they can have practice at the end of the in-service, just like they normally could or would. It's just-
So, looking at this, they could practice both January eighteenth and nineteenth?
That's right. Where you, where you can't is if we have no school on the seventeenth because of a snow day, then we've said, "No, no practice that day."
My wife is signing my kids up for all kinds of YMCA summer camps right now. I'd be curious to know if the Y summer camps, for instance, are already starting, let's say, the week of June seventh. You know what I mean? And we're still in school for three days. So, maybe something I can help you with, or if we contact the Y, let's see, do they start right away when West Bend gets done, or do they wait for a calendar to come out to plan theirs? Just something I'd be curious about.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Jen. We'll invite Sharon up, we've got a lot of Head Start things we need to act on tonight.
Just giving all of you the opportunity to make motions. To spread the well.
There we go.
All right, I'm going to start with the Head Start bus monitor waiver, and that relates to the provision, Head Start, again, these are our three and four-year-olds, and they have a provision that they are belted in their buses, which we do, and kindly, they have color-coded seat belts. So, there's a red, blue, and green, so when they have their snow suits on and their backpacks, you can still find the corresponding seat belt, because they do three in a row on the Head Start buses. They also require a bus monitor, and this is where I ask for a waiver each year. And what we do with our kiddos is at the start of the school year, we have Head Start aides that are on the bus to talk about their social expectations, and we call it the B behaviors. And, uh, so they teach them at the beginning of, of the school year, and then we provide monitors at periodic times throughout the school year. If there are any concerns on the buses about behavior, or just needing to reteach social skills, the Head Start aides will be on the bus for short term. So, it's not that we don't have them ever, we only have them like, like I said, at the beginning of the year, and then for review. Any questions about the bus monitor waiver?
I move to approve the waiver for the permanent adult Head Start bus monitor for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
Second.
Motion and a second by Nancy and Toni. Any questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Next one, has to do with the Head Start selection criteria. The main criteria for Head Start is that the families receive economic assistance. So, it's based on their verification of their job or their salary that the family makes. In addition to that, we then have a list of items that are given a rating of one, two, or three. Some of the things we also include in the rating is if there are more than three children under the age of five in the family, if the student receives social security income, if the child is in foster care, or if the family is identified as homeless. We also look at children whose parent or guardian is incarcerated, and also families whose first language is not English. So, each child is rated on the selection criteria, and then move forward for verification as a student. We have never been on, had a waiting list for children who meet the criteria. So, all these children are enrolled, and then we do have a waiting list for families who are over income. So, all the children that meet the requirement receive Head Start programming, either as a three-year-old or a four-year-old. Any questions about the selection criteria?
I do have a question. Just maybe to restate a fact, last board meeting, I think the criteria for kind of income level or community level in the West Bend School District compared to Slinger or others was twice as high, and if I'm remembered-
It is different, yeah, I don't remember the exact percentage, but it is much higher. But Head Start, it's a county program.
Okay.
So, we have children from Slinger or Hartford. Very rarely do we have anybody from Germantown.
I move to approve the Head Start eligibility criteria.
Second.
Motion by Chris, second by Toni. Any questions, discussion, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next one has to do with our Head Start goals. What we have on screen, are the goals from last year, and we review these each year. Remember, our Head Start grant is a five-year grant, and we en-grand two of that. So, at the start of the last school year, we created the four goals. In addition to that, there are school readiness goals, objectives, and expected outcomes. What I have on here also, in the highlighted TTA, is that it's training and technical assistance that is provided by Head Start. So, once a month, the expert comes in and meets with the team, and we, we review the goals. What I don't have on here is the objectives, just because the document gets really long. So, each, we have four goals. First one is continuous improvement for our teachers. And then we move forward with program delivery that meets the needs of our families, and that sometimes is having half-day programs or full-day programs. We also have a program that is associated with the YMCA. And our third goal has to do with engaging families in Head Start, which is a major portion of what we do. Our family advocates meet with families, and they have family goals each year, and that might be how to access agencies in the community, or it might be how to work collaboratively with the teachers and potentially use some of the strategies at school in the home setting. And then, our last goal has to do with the innovative learning practices, and our, remember, our teachers are aligned with every other teacher in the system, and our Head Start, it's unique because the school district is grantee. We are one of five counties where the school district is a grantee, the other programs are standalone programs. So, those are our four goals, and again, I have the, for each area in the grant, we have to document the training and technical assistance. So, this is an overview of our plan from last year, that then rolls into two thousand nineteen, twenty. Any questions about that?
I move to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Head Start goals and training and technical assistance plan.
Second.
Motion and a second by Toni and Chris. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, last one, has to do with the Head Start cost allocation plan. Because Head Start is funded by a federal grant, in addition, we have a state supplemental grant, they want to make sure that we do not use the, that money for anything other than Head Start. As a school district, we are able to create unique financial codes in, in the WOOFAR system. So, working with Andy, there is Fund Twenty-nine, which is specifically for Head Start, whether it be federal or state. So, we assure that we do not commingle our accounts, and again, having the service of a financial expert in the school district is really advantageous for us. So, just, we need to make sure that, like I said, those funds are only for Head Start. There's no carryover for Head Start, which is unique. So, our grant runs July first to June thirtieth. So, if we get at the end of June and we have funds remaining, we then put those towards the facilities operations or utilities, so we can come out with a zero carryover for each grant. Any questions about the cost allocation?
One, are there any changes to the cost allocation methodologies compared to prior years?
No.
Thanks.
I don't mess with the federal government. Which should please all of you.
I'll move to approve the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty Head Start cost allocation plan.
Second.
We'll give that to Nancy. Motion by myself, second by Nancy. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Sharon. We'll move on to our discussion item tonight, which is a first reading of Board Policy three forty-five point four A and three forty-two point five, which I believe are both revisions to current policy. These are not new policies, but Laura will take us through that.
Earlier, in our discussions earlier this school year, so it would have been last summer, we had some discussion about separating the acceleration from the retention policy and the promotion policy. All of those were lumped into one policy, and so we've had a number of discussions during policy committee meetings, and this was reviewed last at our most recent policy committee meeting, and the team felt it was ready to bring forward for board consideration, and that is the policy before you on acceleration. Any questions about that policy?
I'll just state that I know this was a policy that you, Jennifer Martin, others put a lot of work into, as well as Tiffany Larson, and so this has gone through various levels of scrutiny at the policy committee, so I'm very pleased to see that this is being brought forward. Thank you for your efforts.
I would echo that and say thank you for separating them out. I think that was a little bit of confusion and maybe a little bone of contention, so I, I think it's better, much better to have them separated, and I think our parents and people who are reading this will appreciate that as well. It's just easier to find, easier to understand.
Thank you.
Good. We'll bring this back next board meeting, if we're all here, second reading, we can vote on that. If we're not all here, it'll have to come back for third. So, very good. We'll move on to the next one.
So, the next one is Title One Programming, and the current policy is labeled Programs for Disadvantaged Students, comma, Title One, and is in parentheses. And I, the policy revision also includes a change in the title of the policy, so the policy title would simply be Title One Program. And then, um, the revision is in line with what the WASB recommended policies are. A number of staff members, principals, Title One principals, as, and Andy Sarno, our Director of Finance, have reviewed this policy as well, went to a policy committee, and again, the policy committee recommended that the, it be brought to the full board. Are there any questions on this one?
Thank you very much. We'll bring these both back at our next board meeting, and hopefully, we can vote on them if all board members are here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Kirkegaard?
Just a couple of quick comments. One is, I hope everybody enjoyed spring break. It's a great opportunity for teachers, kids, parents to get away for a little bit, and sometimes they go a fun place, other times they just have an opportunity to rejuvenate at home, and so I think everybody enjoyed spring break. Just a reminder, and we've talked about it before, the elections are tomorrow, it's critical that everyone votes, so that the board can truly get a sense of what the interests are in the community, so that they can go forward. We're going to do East Athletic interviews on Thursday, and so, um, they narrowed it down to two candidates, and we'll interview the final candidates on Thursday, and hope to have a recommendation for you, not too far down the road, as far as the East Athletic Director. A reminder that next Tuesday, there's a committee of the whole, and we'll begin the compensation plan discussion, so Mr. Hamelman and a committee of teachers have been working closely on a possible compensation plan, and so they will bring some recommendations to you, or some things for you to consider. I believe that Lenny Hansen is going to come to the meeting, he's been at most of the compensation plans. Lenny is our new HR Director, and I know many of you have met Lenny before, at the same time, Lenny hasn't been here since he's officially been announced as the HR Director, and so hopefully, I can get him here next Tuesday, and we'll introduce him again and thank him for being, taking a position. We look forward to having him on board. So, that's all I had.
Great. Any questions for Superintendent? If not, like he, like Superintendent Kirkegaard said, a week from tomorrow night, we will have a committee of a whole meeting, we'll have that right here in this room, to discuss compensation structure proposals. That committee's been working hard to bring the board some ideas and proposals for a new comp plan. We'll discuss that a week from tomorrow at five thirty. Our next board meeting is on April fifteenth. We'll get an update on both East and West Athletics, and then after the board meeting, we will give the oath of office to two new school board members, and, um, those two individuals, I think officially become school board members the last week in April. Right, Deb?
April twenty-second.
April twenty-second, but we'll do the oaths on the fifteenth, and then our next, our board meeting in May is scheduled for May sixth and May twentieth.
Deb, or anyone, can you confirm, I think May sixth might be scholarship night at the high school, so that could be a potential for some of us to not be at that board meeting, just as an FYI.
It is, and I'm supposed to be presenting my scholarship that night.
And I have a child receiving one, so I also won't be here. I, I guess I would say for future reference, we should probably avoid that date, if at all possible, and considering so many of our students are being recognized, and it's such a benevolent gifting time from, from the different foundations and different people, I would encourage school board members, if available, to attend that, because I think it's a very important piece of what goes on during the school year, and to recognize those students who have worked so hard, as well as to honor those companies or memorials that are out there. So, I would, I don't know if we can change that date or look at a different time or something, but I would encourage us to do so.
That is an interesting point, because on that night, we will also have board reorganization of our officers, and I think we really need to have all seven board members here. Do you, anybody know what time that-
Seven o'clock?
Seven PM, and it lasts till about nine.
And I'm planning, I, I need to be there as well, to introduce, uh, welcome and do all the different things, and so I agree with Nancy. I don't know if, at, at this point in time, can we put it on the agenda for a change of the board date? Can we do that? We'd put it on the agenda for the April fifteenth meeting to official take action, and maybe move it to the Tuesday or the Wednesday sometime in May, and so would that. And then, as we go forward, when we do our reorganization, it's my understanding that scholarship is always that first Monday in, in May, so that we want to, as we reorganize, avoid that going down the road. And so, if that's okay with you, I'll ask Deb to do a calendar doodle, or whatever we call them, and see if we can't get the appropriate date that'll work for everybody, and then we would try to put that on the agenda for, for the fifteenth, to change the board meeting from May sixth or fifth, or whatever that Monday is, to sometime that week, if that's a possible.
Would it work to keep that date, but move the time from six-thirty to six o'clock, and we would do, or even five-thirty, and do board reorganization, and just keep a very, very light agenda?
It probably looks very light, so five-thirty may work.
I would be in favor, sorry, I'd be in favor of that, or, or the doodle poll, but I'm just saying, I, I just think-
No, I hear you.
You know, that it's just an important night, so.
My personal preference, because I know my calendar for work is pretty busy in the month of May, would be to just keep the date, change the time from six-thirty to five-thirty, obviously board reorganization, but then keep the agenda extremely light, so that we're out of here to go up to the high- to go up to the high school. Why don't we do a doodle on that, Deb, and make sure everybody's okay with that? And I know, well, Tiffany won't be on the board anymore. So, but she's got, I was gonna say, she's got a senior, so she will, she will be up there.
If you're okay with that, I would just wait until Wednesday to do the doodle because then I can just, you know, include the two newborn members.
That'd be great. Perfect. Okay. Any other questions on the calendar? Any other follow-up items? If not, I will make a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion. Namely, review of potential action to approve the closed session minutes of March 18th, 2019, to review a citizen complaint pursuant to the school board policy, and a discussion on personnel.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions on that? And we'll do a roll call vote with Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Thanks. We will go upstairs for a closed session.